Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council on today, April 18th, 2017. I'd like to take a moment to ask everyone to please silence all electronic devices. For tonight's invocation, we call on Councilmember Kathy Hikes.
Let's all take a deep breath. Distracted as we are by the beauty of this spring season, we remind ourselves of our gratitude for the new things there are to notice each day. We appreciate the peace this season brings, and we ask that there be peace for all people, in all nations around the world. Bless our mayor and members of council tonight as we seek to make decisions wisely and well. Bless our city employees and their families as they serve the people of our city. Give them joy and a sense of accomplishment in their tasks. And bless our citizens in their daily work and occupations, that we all may live in peace and prosperity. Amen.
We have a number of special recognitions this evening. Our first recognition, we'd like to call on Preston Hammack and Janine Osborne. Preston, if you wouldn't mind giving us a little bit of background on this.
Sure. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us here tonight in recognition of Alamance Regional Medical Center being acknowledged by Healthgrades as among the top 100 hospitals in the country. This recognition is based on outcomes data over the course of multiple years and sustained improved outcomes, not only over where we were, but also compared to other hospitals in our country. This places us in the top 100 of over 4,500 hospitals in the country, and honestly, it's a testament, I think, to a lot of rigorous improvement work that has been going on amongst all the caregivers on campus. You know, I'm privileged to work about with over 1,600 employees and caregivers in our community, as well as over 400 physicians on our medical staff, and I think this award really acknowledges the improvement work that's there. We're there to provide care in this community and to do so in a high-quality fashion, and our goal is to do so better every day. I think this recognition affirms that our work is paying off. The good news is, now that we're part of Cone Health, my hope and our goal is to continue to be on the forefront of what health care looks like, not only today, but in the future. And there are many things going on within our larger system that really are trying to set the tone for what that could look like. Personally, I've lived in this community now for over 11 years. This is where I call home, and I'm thrilled when we get to do things like this together, because ultimately, we're a community hospital, a community healthcare system, and it's support of the community like this tonight, and it's also how we impact each other, that I think really makes us unique and honestly gives me the greatest joy in what I do. So, thank you for this acknowledgement, and we're very, very proud of this achievement at Alamance.
Thank you.
And the congressman sincerely wished he could be here. He's with the young folks over at the Civil Air Patrol this evening, but he did want me to read this letter on his behalf. And so, dear Mr. Hammack, I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate you and the entire Cone Health team at Alamance Regional Medical Center for being recognized as one of the top 100 hospitals in the United States. Healthgrades, the company that awarded this distinction, placed ARMC in the top 2% of approximately 4,500 hospitals nationwide for their consistent year-to-year superior clinical services. Specifically cited were excellence in pulmonary, critical, and gastrointestinal care. This award enables ARMC to offer top-notch care in a local setting, thereby benefiting and improving the health of the patients, as well as the community as a whole. We are certainly fortunate to have this outstanding facility in Alamance County. Please accept our congratulations on being selected for this award and our sincere appreciation for your presence in the community. We wish you continued success in the future. I'd like to give that to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammack, and to all of our ARMC staff who works diligently towards the health and wellness of this community. We have another special recognition this evening in regards to Maker Day. At this time, we recognize Ben Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, folks from Burlington and Alamance County. The Maker Fair is something that we started here in Alamance County six years ago. Our first year was small, but a great showing, and after five years of hard work, we've actually grown to be the largest Maker Fair in the state, fastest-growing in the region, and now we're the longest-running as well. In fact, for that, we've been recognized by Maker Media, the franchisee of Maker Fair all over the country and the world, and our name has changed to Maker Fair Burlington. We're no longer the Burlington Mini Maker Fair. We're all about 21st-century jobs, STEM skills, and community building, and this weekend, on Saturday, at Holly Hill Mall, we're throwing a free event. It's our sixth annual Maker Fair. We'll have about 100 exhibits with 200-plus exhibitors, school groups, universities, glassblowers, blacksmiths, all kinds of small businesses, young people, old people, people, craft folks. We encourage you to come out and see it, check it out. Everybody in this room and everybody watching is a maker, and we're very proud that Burlington is a maker city.
On that note, it's my honor to present this document. It's my honor to proclaim April 22nd Maker Day in Burlington, whereas our nation is home to a long line of innovators who have fueled our economy and transformed our world, and whereas the maker movement is sweeping through Burlington, providing a current of excitement that is inspiring tinkerers, inventors, designers, and engineers to get creative and use their brains and hands to make things, and whereas the maker movement is a part of a larger strategy to boost American manufacturing and entrepreneurship in local communities, and whereas on July 14th, 2014, the City of Burlington accepted the Manufacturing Alliance of Communities Mayor's Maker Challenge, and whereas the Alamance Makers Guild was formed in 2011 as a community of makers who live in and around Alamance County, share their talents, knowledge, skills, and ideas with each other and the world, and whereas local makers now have a home in downtown Burlington at Steam Junction Maker Space, and whereas the sixth annual Maker Fair Burlington will be held at Holly Hill Mall on April 22nd, 2017, as a celebration of making things, modifying things, and being creative. And therefore, be it resolved that I, he, and Voltoodis, Mayor of the City of Burlington, do hereby approve April 22nd, 2017, as Maker Day in the City of Burlington, and encourage residents to attend the Maker Fair Burlington and discover the maker movement in Burlington firsthand. Congratulations. Thank you.
At this time, council recognizes City Clerk Renee Ward.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you and her duty to hold conflicts and issues in a federal force. At this time, I ask that there be potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda.
I have a conflict with Agenda Item Number Eight, and I'll ask to be recused.
Before council, our minutes from May 6th, or sorry, March 6th, 2017's Goal Setting Workshop, and April 4th, 2017's City Council meeting, do I hear a motion to approve those matters stated?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Minutes have been approved. Before council is our agenda, do I hear a motion regarding the agenda?
A motion that we adopt the agenda.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Before us is a consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about these items, please let us know. Item A, to set a date of advertising, 2016 unpaid taxes for May 2nd, 2017. Item B, to reclassify the Burlington Department of Transportation Office Assistant II position, Level 12, to an Office Assistant IV, Level 17, upon council approval. Item C, to approve a link transit fare-free week, June 5th through June 9th, 2017, for Rider Appreciation Week, celebrating the one-year anniversary of link transit. Item D, to approve a revised recreation use plan governing the use of the city, Lakes, McIntosh, Lake Kamak, and Lake Stony Creek. Item E, to award the 2016-2017 Annual Audit Contract in the amount of $56,000 with Staff Stuart McGowan and King LLP, and authorize the mayor and finance director to execute the contracts. Item F, to adopt a resolution setting a date of public hearing for May 2nd, 2017, to consider designating the May Hosiery Mill property located at 612 South Main Street a historic landmark. Item G, to approve an agreement between the town of Witsit and the City of Burlington for a sewer allocation of 40,000 gallons per day to be treated at the South Burlington Wastewater Treatment Plant. Item H, to approve a contract between the City of Burlington and Central Carolina Veterinary Services, PLLC, for the operation of Spay and Neuter Clinic of Alamance County, effective April 18th, 2017, to June 30th, 2020. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Consent agenda has been approved. Before council, we have one item of unfinished business. Item One, a public hearing has been continued for City Council to consider an application to rezone properties located east of Brassfield Drive and Fernway Drive, and south of West Old Glenco Road for the use of a 172-lot residential subdivision, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 170825, and being a portion of Lot 140023. This is an appeal, continued from April 4th, 2017 City Council meeting, and this time, council recognizes Amy Nelson.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This rezoning request has the recommendation of staff but was denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission by a vote of two to three, as there were concerns about lot sizes and setbacks. Discussions were held at the April 4th Council meeting as to how to resolve the potential fire safety issue. Mr. Scott Wallace is here to request the rezoning and to discuss the conditions.
Good evening again.
Evening.
Scott Wallace, 3708 Alliance Drive, Greensboro, North Carolina. I, since our last meeting, we've been working with staff, and we had some good discussions on some improvements and some revisions, and unfortunately, time has slipped by, and we need a little more time respectfully asked to be continued until the next, I think it's May 2nd, City Council meeting, if we can, and I'll be available to answer any questions you may have as well.
Any questions from council regarding the request to move to the May 2nd meeting?
Please.
I think the perfect motion would be to continue the public hearing.
All right.
And I would move.
Before we vote on that, I'd ask if anyone is here to speak on this public hearing item? Anyone here to speak on the Brassfield Meadows? Please raise your hand. Yes, so we'll entertain one public hearing comment on that. Anyone else to speak? Welcome, if you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone. We have a number of public hearings this evening, and I'd ask that folks please keep your comments to about three minutes. When you speak, we ask that you please give your full name and address. Welcome.
Thank you. I am Delores Sellers. I have a little bit of property right near that proposed property.
What's your address of residence?
The Brassfields. I am in the Morgantown area. That's where I have a small piece of property there.
And your street address?
I'm sorry?
Street address. The street address.
It's on Harris Drive. And I would like to have more information, I'm speaking on behalf of some of the neighbors in that area, we would like to have a little bit more information as to that proposed use of the property. I, this, this area in Morgantown, everybody knows that it's been one of those neglected areas of Burlington, and the development would be wonderful, but we, as the, you know, some of the homeowners there are concerned that we get neglected, continue to be neglected as far as city services, policing, and everything else. So, we want to get just a little bit more information about what you're bringing in, I'm sorry, what's being brought in, and how that that is going to enhance what's there, because anything will enhance what's there, but we don't want to pull any more of the little resources that we're getting. We don't want to pull anything else from what's there. We want to enhance that community, and developing around it would be wonderful, as I stated, but what is being brought in? That's what we want to know. We didn't, I don't think any of us attended the first meeting, didn't know anything about it, but we do intend to monitor the proceedings and how this goes forward. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you for your comments. If you wouldn't mind if you can give your contact information to Mr. Wallace.
I'll do it.
He can keep you updated on the project. Just to clarify, the motion on the floor is to continue this public hearing to the May 2nd City Council meeting. Any further questions or discussion from council? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion's passed. Thank you for your time, Mr. Wallace. We have a number of public hearings scheduled this evening. As I mentioned, we ask that folks please keep your comments to about three minutes in order to allow everyone here who wishes to speak to speak. Item Two on our agenda, a public hearing has been set for citizens to comment on the proposed one-year action plans for community development block grants, CDBG, and home programs. This time, council recognizes Sonja Randolph.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. At the April 4th City Council meeting, you set a date of public hearing to receive citizen comments on the draft for the 2017 through 2018 Annual Action Plan for CDBG and the Annual Action Plan for the Home Funds we receive from a consortium led by the City of Greensboro. On March 29th, a 30-day comment period was publicized. To date, staff has not received any written or oral comments on the plan. The comment period will end on April 27th. Tonight, we will receive citizen comments on the plan. In your packets, you received a draft of the CDBG action plan, as well as the home action plan. HUD has not released CDBG and home fund allocations for municipalities yet. Thus, proposed amounts are based on the previous year's allocation. HUD staff has cautioned municipalities that allocations might not be released until the end of April or the beginning of May. HUD has also sent a notice to municipalities stating that the annual action plans cannot be submitted to HUD until HUD has released the allocation amounts. Once HUD releases our allocation, I will provide you all with notice of the allocated amount. So, as a summary of the proposed projects that were in your plan, I'm just going to go over the name of the project and then the amount. The first one is the Housing Rehab Program, and that is for $100,000. The second is for Ralph Scott Life Services, for $52,000. The third is for the Construction Training Program, for $65,000. Burlington Development Corporation, for $36,000. North Park Library, for $10,000. Relocation expenses, for $2,000. North Park Development, $100,000. Infrastructure for sidewalks, $85,011. And CDBG administration, for $52,000. Now, for the city's portion of the home program, the proposed programs are for owner-occupied housing rehabilitation, $134,646. The construction training program funds, for $65,000. Community housing development operating project assistance, for $26,929. And for city home administration, $11,669. Now, for the Alamance County home portion, the proposed allocations for homeowner housing rehab is $50,722. And for the community housing development organization set-aside, $10,145,000. And also for the home county portion administration, of $4,396. Now, in the audience, I do see most of the people who actually submitted RFPs for CDBG funds. However, I do have one statement that needs to be read by an organization that could not be here tonight, and that is the Burlington Development Corporation. It reads as follows. "In 2006, Alamance County was in jeopardy of losing critical funding to assist persons and families experiencing homelessness. Burlington Housing Authority was approached by HUD and the then LME and asked to take over the grant, using the Housing Authority's nonprofit Burlington Development Corporation." Burlington Development Corporation designed two programs to address the needs of our community. Since the inception of the Hope and Steps programs, Burlington Development Corporation has served 12 chronically homeless individuals and 15 homeless families. CDBG dollars are used to provide supportive services like case management, life skills, and rental assistance to the participants of the Hope and Steps programs. Burlington Development Corporation also offers two of the six homeless housing programs in Alamance County. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
The sidewalk portion of that, what is that to do?
The exact area that is being proposed by the engineering department is from North Church Street, from Beaumont Avenue, to approximately 500 feet to the west, and it is to do upgrades and to make it ADA accessible.
Other questions? This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak. Anyone on this side of the room?
I am M.J. Wilkerson, the Director of Alamance County Public Libraries, which is just across the street on Spring Street. We recently made changes in staffing at North Park, and of course, North Park is dependent on the funding from the Community Development Block Grant, and I had some fun figures to present to you. Usually, we stay even, but just when we compare our business from this March to last March, we are seeing an increase in the number of people that are attending or coming to the library. It's up 40%. No, I'm sorry, our circulation is up 40%. The number of people visiting is up almost 20%, and the number of people attending programs is up 26.8%. And the number of people that we've helped own computers and answer reference questions is up 115%. And the number of people using our computers at North Park is up 17%. So, just since December, when we've made that change, and we have a very outgoing person, and of course, last year, the renovations were made, we're seeing a real difference there. So, we hope that you will continue to support that progress and award us the CDBG, and we hope that the funds on federal level don't get cut for that program as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Nicole Blackwell Outlaw. I'm the Program Manager, Housing Development Program Manager for Alamance County Department, excuse me, Alamance County Community Services Agency. Alamance County Community Services Agency is a longstanding community action that has served low-income families in Burlington and Alamance County for nearly five decades. ACCSA is certified community housing development and is requesting the City of Burlington-Alamance County 2017-18 home total set-aside allocation. These funds will be used to continue the development of Apple Tree Subdivision located in North Burlington in the census tract of 204. The general area contains a mixture of older established neighborhoods and scattered infilling houses, industrial and community facilities. The subdivision is comprised of 18 lots, approximately 4.25 acres of land owned by the City of Burlington. The property is available for affordable housing-eligible clients and citizens of Burlington and Alamance County. Each individual lot is approximately 1/4 of an acre. ACCSA would target city-county residents with low, moderate annual incomes based on the HUD limitations, and families must be first-home buyers or have not previously owned a home in the last three years. We ask for your continued support in the development of the new homes in Apple Tree Village Subdivision. Thus far, to date, we have built 12 homes, and we recently collaborated with Habitat, and our homes are three-bedroom, two-bathroom homes, and with our programs such as this, many homeowners or potential homeowners would not be afforded the opportunity to take advantage of the funds or to be able to be a new homeowner. And I do have pictures so you all can pass around and look at our last home to see how Thank you again.
Thank you. I'm Kep Taylor with the North Carolina Home Builders, representing the Construction Training Partnership, tri-party agreement between the city, the NC Housing Finance Agency, and our organization. We train adults in construction trades, also try to impact affordable housing in the area. And the agency, I know that they've approved to move forward. They do match your investment dollar for dollar, and we are very appreciative of your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room? Yes. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Jennifer Hilton. I'm the President/CEO of Ralph Scott Life Services. Our main office is around the corner on 408 West Trade Street, and the funds that we are requesting are for our day program, which is located on 1212 Tarrantine Street. We've been here in the community since 1971. We support individuals with developmental disabilities, and we acquired the program on Star Point in 2004, and then several years ago, we acquired the building from the county. And so, much-needed repairs to the building are continued to be needed because since it was built in 1971, a lot of improvements weren't made. So, that's why we are requesting these funds to update the bathrooms in the facility. They are fully handicapped accessible, but again, they haven't been updated since probably 1971, when the building was requested. So, we hope that you would consider these funds, because they are much-needed, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? Do I hear a motion from council? We don't have any overflow seating, do we? Any questions from council? Otherwise, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Thank you, everyone, for your feedback on this program. This moves us to Item Three on our agenda. City Council will consider adopting a resolution rescheduling a date of public hearing for May 2nd, 2017, to meet the statutory advertising regulation to consider the Brassfield Meadows contiguous voluntary annexation. This time, council recognizes Daniel Shoffler.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Again, the request before you is to postpone the public hearing schedule for this evening for the May 2nd meeting, so the public hearing can be properly advertised to meet statutory requirements. I will also add that the applicants have been notified of this, and they had no issue or no problem. It does not impact them in any negative way.
Any questions from council? This is a public hearing. Was anyone here to speak on Item Three this evening? Please raise your hand. Hearing no comments? Do I hear a motion to continue this resolution?
So moved.
A motion to adopt or deny the resolution to reschedule, not a motion to continue. Motion. Motion.
You just said it. You're setting the May 2nd.
Yeah, we're setting the May 2nd.
In fact, you cannot have a public hearing this evening because it was not properly advertised prior to the hearing. That's this matter as well as the next two.
That's what I meant to say.
Did I hear a second?
I got your back.
Did I have a second on that?
I have seconds.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Yeah.
Motion is approved. Thank you very much. Item four, city council will consider adopting a resolution rescheduling a date of public hearing for May 2, 2017, to meet statutory advertising regulations to consider the Buckhill Village Apartments contiguous voluntary annexation request. This time, council recognizes Daniel Schaffner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, the request is to reschedule the public hearing from tonight to the May 2 meeting in order to meet statutory requirements for advertising. And again, the applicant was also contacted, and they advised there was no issue in postponing the state of public hearing as well.
Is anyone here to speak on item four? Do I hear a motion from council?
Make a motion that we adopt a resolution rescheduling the date of public hearing for May 2.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you everyone for your patience. Item five, city council will consider adopting a resolution rescheduling a date of public hearing for May 2, 2017, to meet statutory advertising regulations to consider the Copeland Fabrics non-contiguous voluntary annexation. This time, council recognizes Daniel Schaffner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, the request is to postpone the public hearing scheduled for this evening for this annexation to the May 2 meeting. The applicant has been contacted. They advised that there's no negative issue for them as well, and that works out fine.
Is anyone here to speak on item five? Thank you. Do I hear a motion from council?
Move that we adopt the resolution rescheduling the date of public hearing for May 2, 2017.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Item five has been approved. This moves us to item six. A public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezone from R9 Residential District to CR Conditional Residential District for the use of a 72-unit multifamily apartment complex for the elderly. The properties are located on the south side of Chapel Hill Road and the west side of Haynes Avenue. References Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers 131-928, 131-929, 131-930, 131-933, and 131-935. This time, council recognizes Amy Nelson.
Thank you, and good evening again, council and mayor. This rezoning request has the recommendation of staff, has been through the city's Technical Review Committee, including transportation, both local and NC DOT. Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the request to council. The commission found that the amendment to the rezoning will not adversely affect the adjoining property, is in keeping with land uses already in the area, and is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. This project will provide affordable housing for seniors in this area, 55 and over, and it is to be financed with tax credits through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. Mr. Dennis Tharrington is here to speak to this request.
Welcome, Mr. Tharrington.
My name is Dennis Tharrington. I live in Henderson, North Carolina, on 430 Woodland Road. And this will be about the fifth one of these that I have done. I have two that are under construction now, one in Henderson and one in Gastonia. I built one in Oxford, and also one previously in Henderson. And I have, I don't know if you got that on the... Well, I have, at the meeting that we had previously, one of the objections was that they did not like the vinyl siding on the product. And I just wanted to... I brought this with me that I can let you see. Sort of has an rendition of what the outside looks like, and even a page is there that will show you what portion of this building is brick and what portion of it is a vinyl siding part. And I do want you to know that our requirement by the financing agency is that over 50 percent of the building is in brick. And if you look at that, it's considerably over 50 percent is in brick. We do use vinyl siding and prefer that to either wood or hardy plank because obviously you don't have to go back and paint it. But the siding that we use is a better quality than what you see on normal homes. It's a thicker siding. And we also break it up so that you have... On one of those pages in there, you can see there are horizontal pieces and there are vertical board and batten pieces, and there are pieces that look like cedar shakes in the eaves or other, in the dormers. And so I think it's a very attractive building, and without that, it would tend to look almost too institutionalized, if that makes any sense. In other words, we want this place to feel like a home to those people that live there. And we're very proud of the ones that we've done. Every one that we have is full. We have no vacancies. And I had a bunch of people from here have already contacted me, want to move in, so I feel real good about this. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Excellent. Any questions from council?
Was this the only property that you could find just to build 72 units on? But we need to help you find some more property.
Well, we might try to do that. Do it one step at a time.
Yeah, it's one more idea to have affordable housing like that for the senior citizens here. We need more of that, and thank you for choosing Burlington.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments from council before we open for public hearing?
I have questions about Haynes Avenue, and what my understanding is that you are going to be doing some curbing. Is that correct?
Right. I'm sorry my engineer couldn't be here. He had a young child and had promised him a trip to Disney World, and there just wasn't any way I could get him out of that. But he had talked with your transportation officials here, and also with some folks at DOT. And Haynes Avenue is going to be, when you go out on the Chapel Hill Road, it's going to be at a 90-degree angle. It's going to be changed so that it goes straight into that road. And of course, we've got the pavement back along the street next to our property, too. You will actually enter our... You will enter this property from Haynes as opposed to Chapel Hill.
Any other questions or concerns? This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Anyone on this side of the room? Yes, sir. If you could please give your name, address, and limit comments to three minutes.
My name is Calvin Cobble. I'm a CPA with Gillum Cobble &amp; Moser. Our office is adjacent to this property on the west side. My main concern is the runoff from the facility there. No doubt that we have a lot of paving around there. Hopefully, some of it will drain toward Haynes Avenue. But that's... And I made the comment about the vinyl siding, and I hope they will use quality products there. We feel like we've got a nice building there, and there's other buildings around there of very nice construction, and we hope that they will build a building that will be suitable for the area. That's my main comment, is it just a runoff. I understand they're going to have a dry pond there that's hopefully going to do it, but there's a lot of area that's going to be draining from that area. Currently, it's all grassed, and I'm sure it absorbs a lot of the runoff before it gets to the little stream that's back there. That's my comment.
Thank you. Did staff want to address, this is in compliance with the runoff requirements for...
Just go through the technical reading.
Do you want to address the specific stormwater remediation here?
No, I do not. I will.
Come on.
As with all high-density projects, the runoff from this development will be directed through a stormwater detention device. And at this point, really through TRC projects, we don't necessarily specify whether it's going to be a bioretention cell, or a wet pond, or dry pond. It certainly won't be a dry pond because that does not meet our current regulations. But what we control is the first one-inch runoff of water quality. And then we control the first three inches, or it's called the one-year 24-hour storm. So a three-inch rain event is controlled and goes through the stormwater device, and the post-runoff rate is less than or equal to the pre-development runoff rate. So as far as that concern goes, they will be required to meet the water quality and water quantity requirements that the state provides for us to follow. And they are proposing that as part of their plan. It will eventually go down, like you say, it'll come out of that pond, you know, go down the hill to the stream. And it will, you know, during heavy rain events, it may overwhelm the stormwater device that's proposed. But that's not uncommon as we move through development because we're required to treat the one-year 24-hour storm event, which is 90 percent of the storm events. The other 10 percent, they sometimes go over the top and flood it. But that's the state requirement, and they're following that regulation.
Thank you for that. Anyone else on this side of the room here to speak? Do I hear a motion from council to close public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Public hearing is closed. Are there any further questions from council? Or do I hear a motion regarding this request?
Move that we approve the rezoning.
Second.
Motion on the floor is to approve the rezoning. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? The motion is approved. Councilmember Fossett, would you mind approving the statement of consistency?
No problem. City council finds that the above amendment is consistent with the City of Burlington comprehensive land use plan, and that this action is reasonable in the public interest and that the amendment is compatible with existing land use vicinity and reflects the changing land use pattern in the area.
Second.
All those in favor of the statement of consistency, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you, Mr. Tharrington, for your time. We appreciate your dedication to this community. Item seven on our agenda, a public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezone from I-3 Heavy Industrial District to CB Conditional Business District for the use of a 70-unit apartment complex. The property is located on 612 South Main Street. Reference is Alamance County Tax Identification Number 135508. This time, council recognizes Amy Nelson.
Thank you again, and good evening. This rezoning request has the recommendation of staff. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the request to council. The commission found that the amendment to the rezoning will not adversely affect the adjoining property, is in keeping with land uses already in the area, and that is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. This is one of downtown Burlington's greatest opportunities since I've been here for revitalization. When you have a downtown that is floundering a little, one of the best ways to jump-start it is to bring in residential growth. Because when you bring in residents to the downtown, they're naturally going to want some of the conveniences of being able to walk to shopping, to groceries, to entertainment. And once you get that critical mass of population here in the downtown, then those other services will follow. We already have some of that, but this should help trigger more, as well as the strong possibility for additional residential construction. So it is a key component to our future, I believe. And not just that, it's also renovating a historic building that is really beautiful, in my opinion. And Mr. Herb Coleman is here to speak to this request.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Herb Coleman, and I'm a principal of Clacken Properties. We're a... I figured I'd take five minutes and tell you a little bit about who we are. We're about a 10- or 15-year-old company, myself and another fellow started it. We're out of Virginia. And over the last 10 or 12 years, we've done 15 or 20 of these mills in Virginia, North Carolina, and South Carolina. And we've seen firsthand how it changes a downtown. For those of you who know Winston-Salem, where the folks that did Winston factory lofts in Winston-Salem, I'll show you a rendering of the May Hoser and also Winston's. That's one of three buildings we've done in Winston-Salem. And when we first came to Winston, about eight or 10 years ago, people looked at us like we had three heads. They're like, "You're going to do what to those old textile factories over there? Nobody's going to live in those buildings." And they're the hottest things, and they really helped revitalize downtown. It brought 300 residents to downtown. And we're also the folks that did the Forsyth County Courthouse. So we're doing mills in old historic buildings all over North Carolina and South Carolina. And so we have the horsepower to get this done. We've seen the impact it has, you know, in bringing bodies downtown. That's the critical thing. And you guys have an iconic building here, so we'll be good stewards of it. We're doing a similar textile mill in Charlotte in the Plaza Midwood area, which is about twice as big, maybe it's 200 apartments, something like that. But having said that, there are four things we need from you guys, or three things. These projects are really complicated. They take a long time. They rely on the National Park Service to get involved, so you have a major governmental agency that's involved telling you what you can and can't do. So we're working through that right now. The building's been listed on the National Registry. The Part I has been approved. We're working on the Part II, which is basically where you tell the Park Service what you're going to do with the building. The building, we currently, now we haven't gotten Park Service approval on it, so it could change, is 49 ones, and I think the average one is 632 feet. And they average in 21-twos. So I wish I had my architect here because he could tell you more about this, but unfortunately, he wasn't able to make it. So it's 70 units. And so one of the things we need from you guys is a zoning. Your current zoning or the category this building would fit in doesn't comply with the density we need to make the project viable. And so we need relief on that density. I think... So that's one thing. It doesn't meet the minimum lot size requirement for the number of units. So we've asked the staff to conditionally rezone the building. It doesn't meet the parking, the minimum parking requirement. For 70 units, I think your zoning requires one parking space per unit. So I think, I believe we have 60. But we have a fair amount of perimeter parking and working with Noel, and I think we can... It won't be dedicated to the building, but it'll give us 30 parking spaces around the perimeter of the building. So the zoning is critical for the project to move forward. We've also seen in these urban areas is that people want smaller units, and they're less interested in these gigantic spacious units. They want someplace that they can hang their hat, young professionals, and they can go downtown to the bars and the restaurants. And I'm tickled to hear that maybe there's a brewery going into downtown, so that's great. For them, that is. So the zoning is really important. The parking will be critically important. And I'll be probably coming back to you guys in a month or so to talk about that. And the landmark is critically important. And North Carolina has a terrific landmark program that I guess was enacted at the state level, and each county gets to vote on it independently. We've done three of them in Forsyth County, one in Mecklenburg County. And so it's a pretty, not complicated process, but it allows you guys to have some say in what's done to the building because you have a... You're able to look at the Part II, the historic Part II that the Park Service will sign off on, and have some involvement, a little bit of involvement on, you know, on opining on what they say. So that's critically important. I saw that was on the Kansas agenda tonight, and hopefully it'll move forward for the first May meeting, I guess. The building is under contract, so it's not a done deal. So these are the... The pieces have to fall in place. We think we've got the historic piece, the zoning will have... We think we've got the historic piece, the zoning we'll have tonight, the parking will be an important piece, the landmark will be a critical piece. We've done a market study, so we, we think, you know, we're comfortable with the rents. So, you know, all the pieces are falling into place. So I know your next question is going to be, if you, if you grant these things, when are you going to start? And they're tough projects. You have historic tax credit investors. They're really complicated, and they take about a year of work to get one off the ground. We think, probably start, we hope, in the first quarter of next year, first half of next year. It'll take about a year to construct, and probably a year to lease up. So it's a labor of love, for sure. It'll, it'll be a two- or three-year project, but you'll start to see a real building take shape, and being lit up, and really be an anchor for that part of town, probably in the next 24 months. I hope for you guys can support this, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any questions from council? This is a public hearing, so I'll let folks speak, and then afterwards, y'all have a moment to address any concerns they raise. Is anyone on this side of the room here to speak regarding item seven on our agenda? Please remind folks to please state your name, address, and limit comments to three minutes.
Mayor, City Council, Eric Henry, 7125 Bass Mountain Road, Snow Camp, North Carolina. Herb, thank you. This is a game changer for downtown Burlington. And somebody's lived in this community now for 37 years, and see what Burlington used to be. Getting housing in downtown Burlington will turn around. So I'm speaking as part of Burlington Downtown Corporation. We have a few other folks here. Raise your hand, guys, don't be shy. But, well, I can't, y'all got to do the detailed work, but from the big-picture thing, this will be a game changer, and a very, very positive impact to our downtown. So I hope we can work through the details and let this guy get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room to speak on item seven?
Michael Schmider, 539 Parkview Drive. I'd like to speak in favor of this, and to provide a little bit of additional context and example of what I have personally witnessed when a downtown housing project has been brought, and this is, pertains to the city of Galveston, Texas. The downtown area was basically very rundown and industrial, and in 2000, they initiated a revitalization, brought in investors, made lots of lofts, recreated, renovated buildings. When I got there in 2002, it had basically been changed within two years. Now, I'm not saying a one building here is going to do that, but that, over the next five years that I was there, medical students from the university were living there, other people, professionals were moving in. They had shops, it became an entertainment district, arts district, they had art walks down there on a monthly basis, parades were held down there, when previously, through the 80s and 90s, you didn't go in that area after dark. So this is an example, and I agree that bringing people down is a critical mass, and I've seen that in other communities that I've lived in as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room to speak? Anyone here on this side of the room to speak on item seven? Do I hear a motion from council to close the public hearing?
Make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is closed. Any questions from council to Mr. Coleman regarding the project, or any comments posted? Do I hear a motion regarding the project?
Make a motion that we approve the rezoning of this project, this piece of property to Conditional Business District, as stated.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has passed. Do I? Mr. Butler, would you mind reading the statement of consistency?
Sure. I'd make a motion that we approve the statement of consistency, whereas this city council finds that the above amendment is consistent with the city of Burlington's Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and that this action is reasonable and in the public interest, and that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the vicinity, and that it reflects the changing land use patterns in the area.
Do I have a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor of the statement of consistency, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Coleman. We look forward to seeing you again.
Sure, you'll see a lot. This is a good thing, I guess.
Welcome to our community. We're glad to have you working. Item eight, a public hearing has been set for city council to consider adopting a resolution in support of an application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Economic Development Division for a building reuse grant in the amount not to exceed $50,000 to support the interior build-out of a restaurant and brewery located at 302 South Main Street, Burlington, North Carolina. This time, council recognizes Peter Bishop.
Mr. Mayor, first, Miss, you need to entertain the council, and he's entertaining Ms. Hykes' request to be allowed to recuse herself.
Councilmember Hykes?
I would like to recuse myself.
Yeah, all those in favor?
And excuse myself.
All those in favor of recusing Councilmember Hykes, please say aye.
Make a motion. Make a motion that we allow Councilmember Hykes' recusal in this process.
All those in favor of Councilmember Hykes' recusal, motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you and the council. This will be the third time that we're looking at and discussing this specific grant request. The building reuse grant of the North Carolina Department of Commerce Division, Rural Division, was first introduced at the April 3 work session with city council. We have since taken some direction from council, in turn, set the public hearing for tonight at your meeting the following Tuesday, on the 4th. And we have adjusted and made changes to the resolution per our conversation at that work session. I will go ahead and give a brief overview, although the, the public hearing announcement did a good job of it. This is another downtown project that has the potential to work in close proximity and hand-in-hand with the May Hosiery Residential Project, and some other downtown revitalization projects, to establish a beer, Beer Works and Tavern at 302 South Main Street. This competitive grant program is a state grant program. As it is constructed, it requires no local city of Burlington funds. The project would involve $1 million of added value to the restaurant facility and personal property, and the promise to create 10 jobs by the year 2019 for the city of Burlington. In return for that project, the state would award, through the city of Burlington as the applicant, $50,000 if those jobs are created. The city would not be required to provide a 5% match. The Burlington Downtown Corporation and their board have approved to cover the 5% match required by this grant. So just to recap, $50,000 through a state grant that's competitive, that we would like to apply for on behalf of the Beer Works. This project will create 10 jobs by 2019, and invest over $1 million into a downtown property. To speak on behalf of the Burlington Beer Works project, Eric Henry is going to step forward, if you would allow that time. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Henry.
Do you mind addressing him? Earlier this evening, I went to the North Park Farmers Market. Thank you for your support of that. And at that market, spent about $100. Spent $100 with people that grow and produce products in this community, because at the end of the day, it is about us, and supporting us. Five years ago, we started Company Shops, a cooperatively-owned grocery store in downtown Burlington, to both revitalize our downtown, but to start the idea of thinking about business differently. A business that is owned by the community of Alman's County. We took that same model and started Burlington Beer Works. As we all know, we read the paper, craft beer is hot. And the nice thing we got going for us, we're not downtown Greensboro, we have five breweries. The closest thing is Red Oak, or Sax, the one in Sax Paul, a good 20 miles away. We're bringing it to downtown Burlington. But it is a co-op. This does not personally benefit me. I was owner number one at Company Shops, and I'm probably in the top 10 at Burlington Beer Works. I have one share of stock. We now have 1,640 owners in Burlington Beer Works. A $1.8 million investment, that we just need a little bit of help from you guys. The quicker we get it happen, the quicker it's going to happen. But again, this is a business, it's owned by us. This is a business that's not only going to be a brewery, but it's going to be a farm-and-fork restaurant. I was just talking about going out to North Park earlier, and connecting with farmers. What we're going to do with that, we're going to buy the produce that'll go serving that restaurant from this community. We support jobs well beyond the 10 jobs Peter's talking about here. The food, the beer, is for Alman's County. Because one thing I have learned in being in business for now 38 years, is the importance of community, and supporting the place and the people where you live. And that's what Burlington Beer Works is. It's a co-op. It's owned by us. So I'm asking for your support. Let's get this going. With the housing coming down there, with Company Shops, Elon University growing, downtown Burlington, David Huffman, wake you up over there, I know. No, seriously, David remembers what downtown used to be. And we're going, we're going to build it differently. We're going to build it back, and it's going to be our downtown. It's going to be uniquely different, and it's going to be owned by us. So again, thank you so much, Peter, for your work, and I appreciate y'all's support on this project, and let's get this thing going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Anyone on this side of the room like to speak for this public hearing? Yes, sir. Remind folks to please state your name, address, and limit comments to three minutes.
23148 Garden Road, which was forcibly annexed into this city. I've got one question. I hope the beer thing makes it, I don't have anything against it, but how did they know to apply for the grant? Because on the outside looking in, it looks like they had an inside trap. Do we have an answer?
I could answer that question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And this will need to be confirmed from Mr. Henry, but my understanding is that principals of the Beer Works facility and working on a downtown Main Street Solutions Grant in the last year's budget cycle, were informed that that grant was no longer available for this year's budget cycle, so in discussion with the North Carolina Department of Commerce on available programs to assist the Beer Works project, this grant program was announced and brought to their attention, and they in turn contacted the city and expressed their interest in potentially working with the city to apply. That's my understanding of how that occurred.
That's correct.
Oh, wow. That's it?
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room like to speak?
Thank you again, Michael Schmider, Parkview Drive. Again, I'd like to speak in support of this grant proposal, or supporting this grant. Again, along the vein of downtown development, we moved here in 2007, and at that time, downtown was basically LabCorp and Nothing After Five. And since then, Company Shops, increased programming at Paramount, some restaurants, music venues that have live music on the Fridays and Saturdays have brought people in. Now within, there's some lofts that have been going on. We have Above the Blend, and some other places, The Maker, Steam Junction, that partners with our school, Blessed Sacrament, as well as other schools. So this continuing investment in development has really revitalized the downtown, and it was a very good thing to see. It was one of the most difficult decisions to decide if we wanted to come here. So I currently work at LabCorp as a director, and my wife is dean of students at Elon University. And we have seen the challenge of trying to recruit other professionals here from other areas, other people who have interviewed at Elon, and also people that we have interviewed for positions, doctoral positions in our department. And this is the type of thing that as we can continue to develop these, and have different entertainments, and other places, and shops, and markets for people to, to look at and grow, that really helps all of the community, and also to bring other businesses into the community as well. So I'd like to put my support for this grant, and hopefully you'll be able to back them for...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Hal Vincent, 2203 Woodland, here in Burlington. Moved here in 2013. Could not believe the excitement when I came to this town, and if all things willing, hope to be here for the rest of my life with my family, to see that this town not only had a co-op grocery store downtown, but to see an article in the Burlington Times News announcing that a new cooperative brew pub was opening. Having been to places like Sam Adams in Boston, having been, probably catching Natty Greens the first weekend or two here, to be able to share with other people from around the country, from living in cities like New York, Philadelphia, Tampa, Florida, that a town like Burlington embraced a co-op model, and was investing in a real downtown, where younger professionals, those that enjoy a cup of coffee and a newspaper on a Sunday afternoon, can sit outside on a patio, really spoke volumes to me and to many folks that I know, about a new way of thinking, and a way of bringing a downtown area into the kind of prominence where the creative class, so to speak, 21st century jobs are moving. That notion of creators and makers, and I've seen so much here in this town, that to support this grant, I feel like it's just one more step in the progress that so many of you have already made in supporting that, that future, and that new way of downtowns in smaller municipalities, really evolving and adapting to a new, new market and a new way of doing things. So please, I do encourage you all to support this grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room? Anyone on this side of the room to speak?
Good evening. My name is Jessica Pasion. I'm here representing the Burlington Downtown Corporation. I'm the executive director. I live in Meban, but my address here in town is 408 South Spring Street in Suite 201. I am pleased this evening to speak with you all in support of this grant. I really do think that, given that we are hopefully going to have residents in May Hosiery, we are primed and ready for, and excited for this co-op, this beer co-op to come. And as Eric stated earlier, it's going to bring folks in from Elon University and, and other areas around. So I really do hope and respectfully ask council to support this grant application for Burlington Beer Works.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else on this side of the room to speak?
Hi, I'm Wellesley Robinson at 718 Engelman Avenue in Burlington. And as a property owner here, and investor here in the city, I am thrilled that we're here having this council meeting, including the Beer Works in it, as they ask for this grant proposal, and certainly here in support of it, that we have this wonderful group of citizens who is working to bring another entertainment avenue to our downtown. Because as an urban renewalist, and it's what my family's done, and what I've lived my whole life, I have a tremendous value, or tremendous appreciation for the value that arts dining and entertainment brings to downtown communities. And Burlington is such a vibrant community. We have so many wonderful people who live here. Such a great place to raise a family, and to be part of, that, to see Beer Works open, to be able to engage our local agriculture, to see some farm-to-table food, and our, you know, and the environment that it brings as a whole, it's just fantastic. And I'm so glad that they're here, and certainly here to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room to speak? Anyone else on this side of the room to speak?
My name's Bob Lewis, 404 Green Fern Court, Burlington. I'm a commercial real estate broker by profession and, well, no, I'm actually a professional beer drinker. So anyway, I do real estate by necessity. I spend most of my days trying to sell Burlington and Alamance County. You were right in that the apartments are a game changer, as is this. Real Estate 101 dictates pretty much that retail follows residential, so you gotta have residential. This is another jumpstart situation for downtown Burlington, and we really need to embrace this and support it. I'm actively engaged in, in marketing real estate in downtown Burlington. And I have an investment, well, at least my daughter does. She has a building and a business in downtown Burlington. We moved here in 1986, had the opportunity to leave, but said, no, this is where we want to spend the rest of our lives and raise our family. This is extremely important for this city and for us to move forward with the development and redevelopment of downtown Burlington, and I highly encourage you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room to speak? I hear a motion from council to close the public hearing.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
I'll direct it to Peter. I'd like, I'm assuming there may be some members of our audience that may not understand the mechanics of this grant. I inquired into it. I wanted to know, you know, what the city would be liable for. And the first question I had was, you know, could we do it legally? And some of you may or may not know my history. I'm, I'm, one of the first questions I asked, you know, can we do it legally? And so there is a statutory provision, if I understand correctly, that does allow it. Secondly, you know, the mechanics of it, I think, probably be good for Peter to explain when you talk about grants and how this works and really what potential liability of this city would be. Because we, you know, I talked with Peter and the manager because I wanted to make sure in terms of our exposure liability. I think, let me just topple that and let Peter, you and the manager would address that. I think it'd be good for the members, members of the public here that's not aware of it, you know, to be told they just know grant, you know.
Certainly.
What does that mean?
So this specific grant, and I'll defer when, when appropriate to the city manager, is a state grant. So these are state dollars that are being provided to a local government. The local government must be the applicant. The business may not be the applicant through this program. So the local government, be it county or city, must apply on behalf of a business for this grant. So first and foremost, it's a partnership. So there needs to be congruence between the local government and the board and the company that's making the application. There needs to be a very free flow of information, financial information, operational information, and an understanding of the improvement project that's to happen, the quality and the standing of the business. Is it a new business? Is it an established business? What type of jobs are going to be created and on what type of timeline? And is that a reasonable timeline for that project to take place? So by making the city the applicant or the local government, the county the applicant, the state has put a lot of onus on making sure that there's a good relationship so that we understand the business and the business model and the business case presented before us. So because we are the applicant and we are taking in the money, the state also sees that as making the local government responsible for that money. So under the terms of this grant, if it is awarded by the state and approved by the local government, the state, once the business gets underway on their construction and renovation project, the local government can ask the state for money to reimburse the business for their costs. Under the terms of this grant, we need to sign what's called a clawback agreement, which is very typical in, in North Carolina law, that requires any grant funds that were provided to a company and they, where they did not meet their promise, the governments have to come and request those back. It's called clawing back that money. So under this grant, if we were to award dollars to the Beer Works company and they did not meet their promises, they did not create the 10 jobs that they said they would by 2019, we would be forced to come after them and request the money back. And if they were not able to provide it, we would need to take appropriate legal action in order to get those dollars back and reimburse the state.
Okay, and it would be secured, as I understand, too?
Yes, this contract, the grant agreement requires the local government, the city in this case, to get a promissory note for a deed of trust on the property. So we would have a mortgage position as the city of Burlington on this property.
Just so we're real clear, and everybody from a public hearing standpoint, public in general is real clear, any business can apply for this. This is not exclusive. This was not found just for Burlington Beer Works.
Absolutely.
The next business that wants to open in downtown Burlington can come and apply for the exact same thing.
That's correct. Now, there's some specifics within it, but generally, yes, all, many different industries are, are eligible to apply.
What are you talking about, GKN?
Yes, a great example of, of a more traditional industry, GKN Driveline Components on the interstate there in Meben. As part of their recent, I think it was a 36 job, several million dollar expansion at that facility, the city of Meben applied for and received a building reuse grant to do improvements within that existing facility to get that project done. So there's many different applications. I think in my previous presentation, there have been five other brew pubs and breweries that have been funded through building reuse grants in the last calendar year.
Can you clarify the rules on the reuse and what?
Yes. So there are actually divisions of this program. There's a vacant building category, which is the, the specific category that the city is applying on behalf of Beer Works for here, and that is a building that's been vacant for at least six months, and a private business needs to come in and promise to create jobs over a period of time and invest. The other, there's a secondary program of building reuse, and it's an existing building reuse. So if you're currently occupying a building, the GKN example would fill this, and you need to improve it to add employees or capacity or other efficiencies, that would also be an eligible use, and that's the existing building category. And then there's a third program, more for rural communities, and it's called the Rural Health Hope Grant, and it's to encourage grants, funds to support medical office space in rural areas where access to medical facilities is not great. So there are three different types of building reuse grants, and this is the, the former, the vacant building grant.
One additional question, Mayor. I know you, you in your position, but do you foresee coming back to this council with similar requests? Is this the beginning? In other words, this is sort of a precedent, you know, we're, we're getting into something here. This body here is gonna be held accountable, you know, by the taxpayers, the voters. We need to know, you know, what we're getting into, so to speak. And so in your position, do you foresee coming back here, you know, having other applicants downtown? In other words, this is not an isolated application? If you respond to that, I would appreciate it.
Yes. So I've been brought into the city of Burlington to help expand business and create a better environment for business growth and job creation, and we're always looking for great tools to use to try and attract new business to the community, whether that's through a grade A rated hospital, a new brew pub, a new, you know, residential facility in our downtown. Specifically, I look for grant programs that can be of assistance, loan programs, business assistance, non-financial assistance that can help a business. I was familiar with this grant program. I think it's a great grant program, mostly because it involves very minimal local funding. So it's mostly state dollars. But absolutely, Mr. Ward, I would want to come back to you with other projects that would leverage this fund and other potential funds that would be available for economic development purposes. So my plan is to come forward to you, again, hopefully many times, to discuss business support, grants, new job creation, and new investment in the city of Burlington.
This is the overall, you know, overall approach, you know, to revitalizing the downtown, not just this one, you know, particular application, so to speak.
That's correct. Looking at each, of course, you would look at all requests and all projects on their own merits individually. So personally, I get, I'm careful about using the word precedent when it comes to economic development projects, because they're all so different, and each has different pieces to it. So we would have to evaluate all of them on their merits individually and make decisions, again, individually. But this project and other projects like it will always be presented to council and will always be placed within a plan and a vision for the economic growth of the city.
Just to clarify, this grant is available for any business within the city limits of Burlington, not just restricted to downtown?
No, that's correct.
And then can you speak on the disbursement schedule for the grant?
Yes, so I mentioned in my original comments that city council had requested a few adjustments to this agreement to give them comfort with the, the security interest that Mr. Ward mentioned earlier. Those adjustments specifically were to hold all reimbursements for this grant program until all the jobs have been created at that two-year period from the grant award date. What that does to council is it essentially protects you from ever entering into a clawback situation where you'd be having to repay the state any funds or go after legally the Beer Works Corporation. What that means very simply is that we get, if we are successful in getting the grant award from the state, we're gonna hold it and we're gonna leave it with the state until the year 2019 comes and there's 10 jobs sitting at the Beer Works. Then we're gonna request it and make all the payments come through and close the grant in a nice, clean fashion.
Okay, the way it's been structured, I guess, I don't guess there's anything absolutely risk-free, but this is virtually risk-free, the way it's structured.
Yes.
I think, I don't know, at least in questions I've had, you know, there were some questions about, you know, pledging, you know, city tax money for this, but the way this agreement and grant arrangement, virtually no risk because we're gonna see the jobs in hand and things will be moved along. Okay, well, I just...
That's correct.
Sure, I understand, and any member of the public, you know, who had any question about it, they also understood, so.
And I'll add to that, just to clarify that. So the city would only make application to the state for these funds once we were, we were, the 24-month period had passed, which is the state timeline they're looking for. And at month 24, you created the number of jobs you promised us. And when the answer is yes, then we'll make application on behalf, and that money will just be passed, come to us, and we'll pass it straight to the Beer Works. There are other communities who may want to help folks in the early days of their project, in the first 24 months, that may go ahead and advance the money. We're not choosing to do that so that we can do exactly what you've indicated, is to create the most security and the, and the least amount of risk possible.
And to add to that, councilman Ward, we'll also be, staff will be in charge of managing this project, so I'll be providing quarterly reports to the state and to the city manager on progress of the construction project and how everything's going with, with the Beer Works. So we will not be having this discussion now and then two years from later having another one. There will be constant update periods throughout.
Okay, I may not be the only one to have any questions. If anybody has any, now's the time to ask those questions, you know, it'd be perfectly honest.
I believe Ms. Pasion had a comment.
Good pronunciation, thank you. Just to reiterate, the Burlington Downtown Corporation will be kicking in the 5% match that is a requirement of this grant. So if awarded, the Department of Commerce requires a 5% match by the city, and the funds that we are awarded to distribute in our Main Street grant program will be, will fulfill that, that requirement as well. So there is even less obligation for the, for the city.
I believe, did you have a question from the back?
I would think that the city would, should go ahead and get the money because the government might change in Raleigh and they might not give it to you. Yeah. I'd go, but I'm charging more than I do Ralph. I'm thinking maybe the city might be promising something, and then the state enough come through and then the city then, but... Yo, you wanna get a bird in hand, right? Yeah.
Well, we will, as is typical with any grant agreement that we enter in with the state, there will be tri-party agreements that cover all of these eventualities, you know, should there be a force majeure or whatever act of God, all these things would take, you know, even the state government dissolving.
Any other questions for council? If I'm hearing the structure right, this is very comparable to many of the other economic development incentives that we've structured.
It is. The one, the one big difference with this program versus others is that typically in an agreement that we would do with Sheets, for example, the state takes the primary role in clawback activities. Under this grant program, the local government takes that role. So that's the big difference between this and other, other agreements. But however, we've structured it in such a way that we avoid that process by reimbursing at the end.
Do you have a question or comment?
Yes, I have a question.
If you could state your name and address, just...
My name's Kurt Baller, 3445 Black Bear Cove. If you're receiving the $50,000 after the operation's up and running, why do you need the money?
That is a good question. I will probably defer to the Beer Works folks, but in development and obtaining financing permanently for this structure, there needs to be a pro forma formulation that shows sources and uses. And in receiving this grant, it would be showing a source of $50,000 that the bank has comfort in understanding that that's coming to the project so they can show it, they can get permanent financing to do the project long-term.
Sure, sure.
So, yes, and as part of the overall financial package, yes, this is important to the project. Did I cover that?
I mean, this is a $1.8 million project, so this is a small piece, but that could go towards part of the, you know, part of that money will be dead.
Interest rates.
Councilmembers, any further questions or clarifications?
Just, just one question, Eric. How closer does this get you guys to Aurora?
As I said...
She doesn't mind coming to the mic, is that what?
For the folks watching at home.
I have to lean on our president, Sharon, for the details. But again, so $1.8 million project. Of that, we're raising, we've already raised how much in preferred stock?
$412,000.
Okay. And so, and then we're basically working with the USDA guarantee and URA Bank. It's, it's a whole financial package, so this $50,000 gets us one step closer. The biggest council we ran into a problem is we were, when we started planning this project, there was that Main Street Initiative grant, which was, we talked to, they came to Burlington, supported the project, wanted to do the project, $200,000 grant, we're ready to go, go to rises. They don't fund it. They didn't fund anymore, so that money just dried up. So, so that basically did cause a $150,000 shortfall, which we're working on, but this $50,000 will help, you know, bridge that gap of that $200,000 that we were originally planning on in our original business plan. So it will get us, but to give you the exact, the thing about, keep in mind, this is a co-op. This is not my brewery or Sharon's Brewery or, you know, this is already, we've got 1,600 owners. By the time we open, we will have over 2,000 people in our community that own a business. Think about a business owned by us. I can't think of a better thing to invest in. It's a business owned by us. This is not somebody coming from out of town to do this. This is us. This supports us, and we have two, I mean, this money is gonna support 2,000 owners of this business.
Eric, let me ask you.
Yes.
All those folks with beer drinkers, you got a built-in clientele.
You're, you're exactly right, because what'll happen, I mean, who can think of a better business? Company shop, the same with, the day we open Burlington Beer Works, we're gonna have, I mean, you got 2,000 people already got skin in the game. They're gonna be down there. You're exactly right. I mean, it's, it's gonna, you know, and again, if I'm on track, and somebody correct me, I think we're gonna be the fourth craft beer brewery in the country, fourth. Is that right, Hal?
Yes, sir.
So it's, it's not only it's a tapping into the craft beer industry that's exploding in North Carolina, it's also bringing a business model that we need, businesses that are owned by us. How many times we seen a business come to our community and 10 years later, they move on? Let's, let's connect and build with assets in our community, and that's what Burlington Beer Works done. Again, that $50,000 is a small piece of the 1.8, but it does get us down that path quicker so it can open those doors and bring revenue to downtown Burlington, increase tax value of downtown Burlington, support agriculture in Alamance County. It's just a win, win, win. So we need you guys. Say, guys, now.
So what happens with Burlington Beer Works when Alamance County Beer Works comes and moved in the next block? Have you thought about the competition? If you build one, there's another that's gonna come eventually.
Right.
Are you ready for the competition for that?
Yes, I mean, we're ready for the competition, but the other thing I love to share about, and sorry to distract, the strength of a co-op is a strength of knowledge. And, you know, it's not one person, one idea. On our board, you know, we have a certified brewmaster from Germany, Sebastian Wilfrid. This guy's sought out from all over the state. He's a, he's our beer dude. We've got an architect, we've got an accountant, we've got access to law, we've got this tremendous knowledge base. But the bottom, you know, too, I will say, this, yes, we'll bring on competition, but I think I... too, I will say, this, yes, we'll bring on competition, but I think I will put my money on the knowledge of our board and the strength of a business that's owned by our community.
Any other questions from council?
I'm not ready to vote on the public hearing, Mayor.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is closed. Do I hear a motion regarding this agenda item?
Yeah, I'm not ready to vote on this right now.
Okay.
I'd, I'd like to carry it over to the next meeting. I just don't feel comfortable with the, with voting tonight on this.
Would you like to make a motion to continue this over?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to make a motion if we can continue it over to the, the next May second.
May second?
Um, Mayor, I, I'll second the motion. I, I would like for all of us to be very comfortable with it, uh, when it comes to time for a vote, you know, because we have one member that has been refused. I know there's some anxiety here about moving forward, but I think it'd be helpful, if we could, in other words, is you talking about two weeks out, uh, Mr. Fox? I have no problem with that. Mr. Robert, do you have any?
Is that satisfactory for the Bureau? So, you still be able to apply for that grant? Okay.
We'll make ourselves available to you anywhere, any place, any questions.
Thank you, Eric, I really appreciate it. Uh, I'll second his motion, you know, that we can consider that. Not, not another public hearing, with the public hearing is closed, I'd like to make that point. Uh, but, you know, you'd be on for some decision at that point, if, if that would be good. Certainly appreciate it.
I can assure you, I have a decision by the next meeting on, and have my mind made up on, on the situation.
And so, feel free to reach out if you need any more information or you have any questions with our, so our business plan and what we, we envision, in your words.
Thank you.
All those in favor of rescheduling this agenda item to the May second City Council meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is approved. We'll give council member Hikes a couple moments to return to the chambers. will consider approving. Do we have our manager?
No.
We lost our manager.
We lost our manager.
Thank you, Mike.
New business item number nine, City Council will consider approving budget amendment 2017 dash four-four for police and fire radio system capital needs, the details of which are spelled out in your agenda. This time, council recognizes Police Chief Jeff Smyth.
Mayor, council, my privilege to be here this evening. I do, as I get started, I have a brief complaint with the city clerk. I can't possibly talk about radios after 2,000 people drinking beer. It's simply not fair to put me in that position, but I'll do my best to surge forward. So, we have a four-year budget amendment for some critical infrastructure for our radio system. Uh, I'll call on Fire Chief Smith here in a moment to echo my remarks, I think, but, uh, we, uh, we are, uh, at the behest of Motorola, giant corporation in America who controls radio operations, and, uh, like anything else, they build equipment that ends its life cycle and has to be replaced. Um, we've gone through a good bit of that in 2011 and at other times, and we're at this place in time where some of this radio equipment is aging out and has to be replaced. Um, we're trying to enhance the security of our communication features for first responders, police and fire. I think unfortunately, in 2016 and in 2017 across America, we've seen a surge of people ambushing, assaulting, and killing police officers. Uh, they have some ability to predict our movements because all of our radios are currently, uh, scannable, and we're seeking to move to a position where they're not scannable to further protect our police officers from ambushes. Uh, same for fire service in, in limited circumstances. So, I, I believe you have the, the memo in front of you maybe that lists this equipment, but police radio equipment. And then, uh, for our backup systems, we use a number of repeaters that access tower sites, and so there's universal power supplies at those water tanks. Those are for the rare circumstances when our basic radio system fails, we've got a built-in redundancy where we can turn to a specific dial on this radio and it'll use completely different frequencies, completely different transmission lines to maintain critical first responder communication systems for our city to keep our 50,000 residents safe. Uh, so this is, uh, vital equipment for us to purchase. Because we're towards the end of the fiscal year, we're able to leverage another four percent reduction in costs, so the, the vendors are eager to meet some end-of-year quotas, and so we're seeking to leverage that, um, and save the city additional money in making those purchases now. So, it's, uh, to use Eric's language, it's a win-win for us. Um, to increase the infrastructure for our first responders, maintain those critical, critical systems, and then save, save some money in the process. So, Chief, do you want to make a, a couple remarks about how it impacts you all?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's basically the same thing for fires, it is police. The communications is so important. Uh, you know, there's really three, three things I see on the scene is you need to be prepared, you need, uh, to have the proper training, and you have to have communication. There's so many times when you go back and look at incidences that happened, or particularly things didn't go as planned, or, or there were issues that arise, a lot of that comes back to communication. So, having good, reliable communication equipment is very important to our operation, uh, to have a, uh, as good outcome as we can, but also protect our officers and firefighters. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And then I have in my back pocket, Kenyon Harrison, he's our, uh, technology manager. He's the architect of this system. Uh, he informed me that the industry standard for our primary radio system is 99.5 nines, right? So, 99.9999, uh, uh, full functionality, and we exceed that by how many decimal places in other, two?
We have a few.
Yeah, so, we, we have a remarkable system, thanks to him. I want him to get credit for that, but also he's available to answer any very technical questions you might have, and I'll answer any surface-level questions you might have.
So, that was seven extra nines, right?
There's a bunch of nines in there, so, we got a pretty good system, but this will make sure that it's, uh, backed up and capable and fully functional for virtually any scenario that we might encounter, uh, for the next several years.
Questions from council?
Just one, one question to begin with. I might, I'm, it might lead to something else. Obviously, we're looking at nearly 1.3 million dollars, which comes out of our fund balance. That was not in the budget.
Correct.
We had not planned on this. It's not, not part of our normal budgetary process. Are we at a critical capacity where we're putting people's lives in danger if we do not wait till our next budget cycle, which we're scheduled to meet on next week, for, for next fiscal year?
I, I don't want to mince words. There, there are pieces of the system, the universal power supplies, that are, uh, at end of life, and whether that end of life is this week, next week, or a year away, we can't predict those things. We only go on, uh, what we're provided by Motorola and by the manufacturers of those bits of equipment. So, the one universal power supply that's in my building, uh, forty percent of the replacement cost is the cost to upgrade the failing components or potentially failing components within that single piece of equipment. So, we could delay the big purchase, but we'd be spending forty percent of the purchase price today to upgrade that, to make that secure, and we'd think it's more frugal to spend the larger amount upfront and guarantee that and not have a, a sunk cost of forty percent that then is wasted in six months or 12 months for the piece of equipment. Um, the sooner we get encryption capability on our radios, that is critical to, to enhancing the safety of our police officers, and I can't tell you when that assault or that threat might come. Uh, I don't want to, you know, light a fire that's, that's not there, but it's a, a practical reality in America that those things are happening, and I would rest better at, at night knowing that the police officers and the firefighters are protected from that kind of thing, and encryption allows us to do that at a much higher level than we have today. So, that's, that's, that's how I would answer that question, sir.
It's functional now?
It's functional now, it absolutely is. It, it works now, it's not gonna peter off tomorrow. Um, uh.
So, I think your, your, your request is certainly valid. I, I would not even begin to try to stand and tell you that we need to limp along the system, uh, when it comes to something of this magnitude. Um, but trying to be fiscally responsible and.
Yes, sir.
And make sure that we go through a full budgetary process. You know, just, I, I don't even know that city staff is aware, um, but we try to handle things as we, this council's been very good for a number of years on putting money back to handle things. Um, but, but from our fund balance just this year alone, this fiscal year alone, we've gone in two and a half million dollars. So, uh, of which 1.6 of that was budgeted, it was appropriated as extra in case of emergencies, but that's significant, um, uh, piece. So, if, you know, we're, we're talking about three cents on a tax dollar for, uh, maybe four cents on a tax dollar for that amount of money. So, there's some other things. If we've got to look at some sort of tax adjustment, we're in a, um, revow period, which I'm deeply concerned about. I know some of our, we're, we're in a, a negative revow current situation. Uh, I think we would be frugal to, uh, take a look at how revow is going to affect us financially and see what overall adjustments we need to make, and then let's be sure we incorporate this into it. Um, is, is that, I mean, that's just my.
I, I, I agree with that, and I, you know, at any time that, you know, once we get into the budget, we put this on any time, in other words. But I look at the big picture and see what we're up against, and if we, it's not necessarily July one, but if it fits earlier and we need to do something, we can start to do that.
I think we could do it earlier.
Yeah, absolutely.
But, but then we know how revow's going to affect us and whether or not we've got to make a, a rate adjustment off sentence, just to stay within the neutral.
Yes, sir. And to answer your question, uh, the, the police department proposed this initially for FY seventeen eighteen.
Yeah.
Which will be kicking in July one, and in our budget process this year, uh, in trying to, to shuffle various capital needs, because as you all know, there are always more capital needs than we can afford in any given fiscal year. Uh, Finance Director and I, uh, suggested let's take a look at that in this current fiscal year as opposed to addressing it in the next fiscal year. So, to answer your original question, uh, must it be purchased before June thirtieth? No. The original request was to be purchased some date after July one, so if you would like more time, and we obviously have over the next two or three weeks, a lot of conversation about budget, so to, to push this forward to May second, I don't believe creates any operational, uh, issues that we can't overcome.
I am really glad you guys put this on our plate this early, as we start having those conversations. I think that's wise and, and very much appreciated, but I'd, I'd like to see the overall picture and just, just become comfortable with it.
That make sense to me?
Yeah, I, I agree. We can carry it over to the next meeting.
And we do have a, a four percent discount that's in play here, so we'll explore what the longevity of that might be before the end of the cycle, whatever that might be for Motorola folks, and we'll get that information. So, that's included in the wise decision-making that we're undertaking.
Councilmember Hikes, do you have any questions there?
Okay.
Okay. Do I have a motion to postpone that?
No move.
So, it's a motion to postpone to the May second City Council meeting, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor of postponing the item to May second, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's approved. Thank you, Chief.
Need a radio, Ken.
While the chief is up here, I just want to, want to say that if, if that beer works as a go, that's gonna generate some business for you.
It might. It's right down the street, though, we're prepared to respond.
Really, I, I think it'd be real convenient. We could do it efficiently, but, okay, that's good.
I'll share a story with you later, sir.
You bring the paddy wagon back out. This moves us to item ten on our agenda. City Council will consider a change order to extend the 2016 street resurfacing contract with Riley Paving, Inc. by 915,098 and 39 cents in order to add additional streets. This funding will be made available by utilizing resurfacing funds in the 2016, 2017 public works budget. This time, council recognizes David Bowman.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Um, you almost said everything I had to say, but, uh, the, uh, council approved the resurfacing contract in May of 2016. That work has been completed. That was out of the 2015, 2016 public works budget. Um, in the contract, we have, uh, verbiage that allows us to extend, uh, the contract by a hundred percent. We had good unit prices, uh, last spring, so, um, we would like to extend, uh, the paving contract. The map of the proposed, uh, extension streets is in green. Uh, the, uh, if you can read it, the streets that we just finished resurfacing are in orange. Um, we're proposing to fund this out of the 2016, 2017 public works budget.
Any questions from council?
I do have some questions, just about the overall program.
Okay.
I'm presuming that these are streets that are the city's responsibility for improving or keeping up, up to.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so, the streets like maybe Front Street, Davis Street, Church Street, are all state-maintained roads, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. All the DOT roads are maintained by DOT.
They're not doing very good job lately.
Well.
Just wanted to know.
And we, we're, we've got a scoring system with our streets that we maintain, isn't that correct?
Right, we have a paving consultant that every three years goes and rates the, the asphalt condition on every block of every street in town. And so, our list of streets is based on those pavement ratings.
Do you know what the average score is right now? Um, we score very highly. I know we've been very proactive.
We, we score highly and, and we should be moving up after this. I think our, our average scores on, on this extension are probably in the, in the mid of our sixties.
Any other questions from council? Do I hear a motion regarding this item?
I approve the change order to extend the 2016 street resurfacing contract.
All those in favor of approving the contract, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. But our item number agenda, City Council will consider adopting a resolution to approve the Recreation in Parks Master Plan Update through the year 2020, available online at the website listed on your agenda. This time, council recognizes Tony Laws.
If you drop the mic at the end of the presentation. Anyway, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll be very appreciative. The reason this is on your agenda tonight is, uh, possible part of grant, uh, Park Recreation Trust Fund Grant for Willowbrook Park Project, and, um, this master plan was updated in 2012, presented to you at a, at a work session in December of that year, and we never, you accepted it, but we never approved it, didn't need to approve it, but now we do because it's required by this, this, uh, Park and Recreation Trust Grant. So, that's the reason we're asking for it, vote on it tonight.
Any questions from council regarding this plan? Do I hear a motion from council?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the Recreation in Parks Master Plan Update, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's passed. Thank you, Mr. Laws.
Thank you.
You may drop the mic now, if you'd like.
I want it for the next one, too.
Item twelve, City Council will consider approving a site-specific master plan for the Willowbrook Park Project. This time, we again recognize Tony Laws.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And this is the second part of this. This is the site-specific master plan, which is what's required for the Willowbrook Park. site-specific master plan, which is what's required for the Willowbrook Park Project. It was in your packet and everything. You've seen the illustrations of the plan, but the part of the grant required a very extensive written text explanation of that master plan, and that's what we're asking you to approve tonight so that we can submit that grant. It's in connection with the Alamance County Recreation Park Department, and you lead and us to request this grant to help with the Willowbrook Park Project.
Any questions from council regarding this item? Do I hear a motion from council?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the site-specific plan for the Willowbrook Park Project, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a staff report this evening regarding the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. At this time, Council recognizes City Attorney Keneer, Landy Rue, and David Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Due to the devastating impacts of Hurricane Matthew, our state is offering the largest hazard mitigation grant program since Hurricane Floyd. Our community has been asked to supply to the Department of Emergency Management a letter of interest prior to May 1 in order to be considered for these funds. It should be noted, due to the amount of devastation and funding available, these are, there are no guarantees that aid will be granted to any of the selected properties that are submitted for relief. This time, I'd like to introduce David Bowman, our acting floodplain administrator, to provide more detail, and he will be the city point person for providing information to interested parties. He is located in the Engineering Department here in City Hall, and his contact number is 336-222-5050. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is just a brief overview, staff report. There's no council action required at this point. The, in response to Hurricane Matthew back in the fall, FEMA has allocated funds for their Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Most of these funds have been distributed to the eastern part of the state, those counties that have been designated as, are declared as presidential disaster areas. The state has reserved or set aside some funds. We don't know how much at this point, and the state doesn't know how much, but they've set aside some funds for those undeclared counties such as Alamance. The hazard mitigation grants cannot be used for replacement or repair of flood damaged properties. They can only be used for preventive, or prevention of flood damage. Most of that is through property acquisition. There are several properties here in Burlington. The owners have approached us that we feel are very well suited to the buyout program. Before we can pursue it any further, though, we have to submit a letter of interest to the state. The letter of interest basically is a list of properties that we feel are suitable to the buyout program. The state will take the letters of interest and use that to estimate the need for assistance in the undeclared counties. If we, at this point, just by presenting the letter of interest, there is no commitment on the part of the city, but if we don't submit the letter of interest, then we have no, we can't proceed with the program. The letter of interest has to be submitted to the state before May 1. If we are granted the funds from FEMA for the hazard mitigation, those monies will pay for property acquisition. They will pay for the demolition of all structures on the property. It'll pay to restabilize the property. At that point, the, the property will be deeded to the city, and it can never be built on again. The city can use those properties for neighborhood gardens, community parks, stormwater management. We can even lease it to adjacent property owners if there's that desire, but we have to retain ownership. At this point, there are some criteria. In order to narrow down the list, we have, because every, every house that gets flooded is not going to be able to receive buyout funds. So the criteria that has been established is the primary residential dwelling has got to be prone to flooding. The dwelling has got to have a history of repeated flooding by stormwater. The dwelling has got to be in close proximity to a creek or drainage way. The appraised value of the property has to be less than $200,000, and the owner has to willingly ask to be included in the buyout program because he basically surrenders all claims to the property. Any, in order to meet our deadline, any interested property owners have to contact the Engineering Department by April 25. So.
Any questions from council on the staff report?
I have a question, David.
Yes, sir.
If indeed we are accepted for the program, you say that we, we be titled in the name of City of Burlington, and we, and in perpetuity, we can't grant easements to adjoining landowners. Let's say, for example, we have 15 buyouts. Now, you know, of course, I have no idea what the various sizes of the property would be, but with that, I can see certain, certain liability maintenance issues, if you will, if we become the title owner. I just wonder if there's any way at all, you know, as between the two adjacent landowners, that could be, that could be granted an easement, you know, where they could do that. You know, I don't know. I just see some, I see some potential issues related to that. Of course, we can cross that bridge if we accept it for it.
Well, as far as the easements go, I know that we can't convey any of the property.
You can't convey paid title, but I was just wondering if you could, if you could convey, you know, easements with certain restrictions, and I would, let's say, for example, you got a, you got a 100 by 200-foot lot, just for example, and 50 by 100, you know, 50 to one side, 50 to the other. It would be better, you know, at least from the city's maintenance point of view, intending to 20 different little mini parks, if you will. I'm seeing, I'm seeing some obligation here, you know, while on the face of it, it sounds good, and I think it'd be good because I think we do have some properties that would really, it'd be, at least from a telephone-in point of view, the calls that we get about places being flooded, if we could buy them out, it'd be great. But on the other hand, you know, are we trading this problem for, you know, you know, when you say in perpetuity, that's a long time.
Right.
It's far, far beyond my tenure, if you will, and so, but in any event, I just want us to think about that, you know, as we get into it, because at this point, like you say, we're not obligated. We can look at the program parameters if awarded. So I just throw that out because I see that as an issue.
Thank you, councilmember. Other questions or comments?
Has any property owner applied so far? Seen it advertised a lot.
We actually had several property owners come to us even before the state announced that this funding was available, asking if there was any way that the city could take over their, if they could give their property to the city, because they have repeated flood issues for the last 20 or 30 years, and, and this, these properties are ideal for this program. So, so yes, we have had interest shown.
We did make a point to send notice of this to properties that our Engineering Department and our stormwater group know that our folks that have issues that may be eligible to initiate a new land.
Any final questions or comments? Again, this is a staff report, so no actions required. Thank you, Mr. Bowman and Mr. Rue. We had no public comments signed up for this evening. Are there any council comments?
I just have one, one comment and request. We had a speaker from the floor tonight make reference that a particular, a particular area had been neglected from city services and even police protection, and that, that concerns me, one, that somebody would feel that way, and I understand people look at things through their eyes of their particular community and certain things that may be in need. I feel neglected when it comes to our paving projects because they've paved on both sides of my block and not in the middle. But, but I, so I get it. I mean, I understand, but, you know, tonight, we talked about Link Transit. Link Transit serves our entire city. It serves border to border and then beyond. We talked about our Parks and Rec. We talked about our master plan, a couple of things. That's our whole city, comprehensive piece. We talked about paving. We talked about a million-dollar paving budget that we operate on a continuous basis for the entire city, and I know both chiefs personally and have for a long time, and they're not going to pay any attention to borders when it comes to life-saving maneuvers or public safety. So I hope, Harden, I'd certainly urge somebody from city staff to reach out and contact this individual. I certainly am going to try to.
Yes, sir.
Because I think that is, that's an extremely important, how you feel personally is important, and I think the fact that it was brought to our attention, we owe it to that individual, we'll reach out and have that discussion.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, councilmembers. Other comments or?
Just want to, I've got one. I'd like to thank city staff, all employees of the city, and the public, the general public for all the letters of kindness during and passing of my wife, so I just want to say thank you so much.
One quick comment as a follow-up, and Mr. Posner reminded me. I recently lost my brother, and I had a, a great outpouring of city employees, former city employees, and I'm very thankful for that. It's always been, you know, at least the city, been my experience over the years, it's really, it's really like a family, and we treat each other like a family, and, and we're always there in need and sorrow, and it's really a good feeling, and I'm, I'm just extremely proud to be part of the City of Burlington. I think I said it earlier in my email, but I want to reiterate it here, and thank all of you for what you do. I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, councilmembers. On that same note, we're excited to announce our second Belong in Burlington program next Wednesday, as we welcome new residents to the family that is Burlington. Folks are welcome to attend City Hall from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Wednesday evening next week, and learn more about programs and opportunities throughout this community. I also have a little Alamance Creek cleanup on April 22 from 9:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. Volunteers are needed for that. You can look for more information on the city website. Coffee with a Cop is going on on April 21 at the McDonald's on Huffman Mill Road from 8:00 a.m. until 9:30 a.m. We welcome all to come on out. And we're doing a household hazardous waste collection. This is one of just two of these that we do each year at the Police and Fire Training Center in Burlington. That's on April 22 from 8:00 a.m. until noon. Without hearing any other comments, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, meeting is adjourned until May 2. Thank you for coming.